Okay, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six thirty one P M. Um, we'll kick off with a roll call. So Eric isn't here today, so that's why I'm filling in for him. Uh, so Rhiannon is here. Vince.
Here.
Megan.
Here.
A J.
Here.
Um, and then we have guests today from D C E D. You guys want to just introduce yourselves real quick?
Hi, I'm Southie Edwards. Um, I'm a local government planner for the Southwest at the Department of Community and Economic Development. And.
Uh, I'm Molly Sarver. I am also planning specialist with the D C E D.
Thanks. Okay, uh, so we'll move on to item number three, approval of the minutes from the meeting of October twenty second, uh, twenty twenty four. Any discussion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Look at your mic is.
I um, did wanna make a just a note for the minutes about my, at least my personal, Megan, opposition to a C D C at this time in Crafton, um, because we I know because the mic situation and um, I just wanna make sure that that's on the record for me.
I mean, I think it was clear that no one on this committee was looking was in favor of C D C in that meeting, so.
Yeah, I don't wanna speak on behalf of everyone. I was thinking that it could be valuable for us to say that at the moment that the planning commission isn't in support of love, but I don't wanna speak.
Yes.
If if I'm looking at the updated minutes, it says the commission concluded there is no immediate need to launch a C D C. And the conversation will be revisited if revisited if online of potential project or program opportunities that may require.
Okay, oh, sorry.
No, there's, there was a mic for each of them. Yep.
No, no, that's, thank you. Appreciate that. So, how's that? All right. So I will just read the last sentence of the minutes and see if we need to add that. I didn't read.
You know, it wasn't a, 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 a great influence to us, but it says the commission concluded there is no immediate need to launch a C D C and the conversation will be revisited if and when potential project or program opportunity arises that may require utilization of a C D C. So that might suffice.
Yeah, I think for me, I think no immediate nor need nor appetite could be, I I I'm not, I thought something that reflects, I don't know. Just to clarify, just to clarify the whole conversation.
Yeah, I agree, Bob.
I agree.
I I agree as well. We'll uh check with Eric before he finalizes it, but it sounds like uh, maybe I could entertain a motion to actually, we have forum, so, okay, entertain, I'll entertain the motion to approve the minutes as amended. Okay, so then we'll move on to agenda item four, planning commission discussion, uh, trails feasibility study. Um, I'd Jim or Mike? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Okay, the eyes haven't. Anyone of those? No, okay. Moving on to agenda item number four, trail feasibility study. Just an update on where that's at. Jim or Mike would want to be.
Sure. Yeah, so the um, if it's I know, and I don't, that just happened, just started happening today. I have no idea how to fix it. Yeah, that is, that has been fixed, though. That, the sound is good now. You can see because it's translating everything very clearly. The only, that, that just started happening today. I have no idea why. Um, are you, i- can anybody online please tell me if they're hearing the hiss? Um, there's a hiss that we're hearing here in, in, in the council chambers that's coming from the speakers. Can someone online tell, raise their hand if they're also hearing it or, or make put something in the Q and A if they're hea- hearing it or not hearing it? Nope, not his there. So they're hearing, so you're hearing everything clearly, Nicole? Can you answer that?
I can't.
I'm picking yours out. That was the one that
I noticed that point, A J moved that.
I noticed it too. Can you push your button on yours? Okay.
It's on still, right? If you're talking to it? Yeah, no. Yes, is it on?
No, you have to let go of the button there to be on.
It is, I do. The light's on.
Well, okay, so it's working. Might just be a short amount of mic.
Okay.
Okay, we'll look into that mic. Thank you.
You can share this mic.
All right. Trails feasibility. And Nicole did say she could hearly, clearly hear, so. Uh, trail feasibility study. So the uh, deadline is closed for uh, applying, the infrastructure committee passed it along to the vacancy committee and they are going to be deciding uh, who from that list is on that committee. Um, and they, I think they're meeting, is it next week they're meeting? You're, you're on it too, Vince.
I am on it. I didn't see an email.
I think, I think they're meeting next week, but I'll clarify that um, and get back to everybody, but that it'll be chosen and announced um, by the vacancy committee within the next couple of months.
Any questions or further discussion from the planning commission on the trails feasibility study?
I guess I was just wondering what you anticipate the planning commission's involvement to be in that, if any.
Um, we would, we're, um, basically right now, we would like one planning commission member to be on it. We have a full list of recommend, recommended um, uh, folks. We do want someone from council on it. We want someone from planning commission on it. Um, and then we wanna uh, make sure that we spread out the rest of the um, types of people that are on it. Um, and then once that's decided, then it'll come back, uh, once that's decided, it'll come back to planning commission. Um, just for an update, um, at that point, and that, that a person who's on it from planning commission would be the liaison to the planning.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, so then I'll move on to uh, the agenda item number five, business development subcommittee. Megan, did you want to give an update on that?
Um, sure. A J and I met um, a couple of weeks ago to talk about the formation of such subcommittee. And we named the goal to be to form relationships with current and potential business owners alongside members of the community within Crafton Borough. Through a shop small Crafton initiative and to attract future businesses to Crafton. Does that feel right for you, A J?
Yeah.
Um, so it would be A J and I, plus, we were thinking s- a total of seven to eight members of the business develop of the, of the subcommittee. Um, we named us wanting to um, include residents, a few residents, and then a few small business owners within Crafton. I mean, there's lots of logistics that we have that we didn't totally talk about, but at the same time, wanting that did not be the hugest commitment for everyone, you know, one meeting once a month, perhaps for the first quarter. The intention to be to collect um, information from our current small businesses and to initiate a, some sort of um, shop small initiative, right, that maybe includes some window clings or things like that to um, sort of incentivize participation in our survey and to bring back something to those businesses um, in the conversations that we're having. Um, I wanna note that I want within that um, committee for there to be a secretary so that notes are taken and when then we can come back to the larger planning commission and to be able to really accurately reflect the conversations that are there. Is there anything more you wanna add at the moment?
I don't think so. I think I'm, I'm just very excited about the idea of starting with our businesses and bringing them something and starting with the holiday season and shop local and we're, we are working on integrating the lists and various lists in the community. We're gonna be doing that coming up. So that's all I would add.
The only thing I was thinking about is if, you know, some of this would require some budget to do so, whether it's, you know, the printing of window clings, whatever, the designing of that, and I know it's, you know, council is voting on its budget right now. Um, and I don't know exactly, we haven't priced out anything, which so, we're, this is just a, you know, a, a concept at the moment. Um, so maybe just to name that um, asking for Mike and Jim to be mindful of that as something that we would like to initiate in the next year. Um, and I don't think any of those initiatives would cost a significant amount of money, but um, you know, some potential allocation of um, the budget to initiative would be great. And we can, if you wanna talk more about that, we can do that. But, yeah. I think that's it.
Questions?
I'm good.
Thank you. Feel like a timeline for us is probably like if, we're, we're thinking about timeline, maybe like January?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I actually was hoping that we could pull something off into this holiday, but we probably can't since it's November.
Yeah, like, we will definitely for next holiday season.
I will say this, um, so uh, American Express um, usually supports the shop small initiative fairly robustly. Um, and they offer free, like, shop small swag um, for anybody who asks for it, essentially. So we might be able to get, if we reach out this week, we might be able to get stuff for this holiday season that could be used by local shops. I mean, it wouldn't be a very robust rollout because of the time, but we might be getting able to at least promote it a little bit.
The only thing I would say is that what we viewed as, well, one, we wanted something maybe branded with new Crafton branding, since we just went through that process, and I think the intent in both to, to, for there to be a visibility, but also for when members of this, you know, this subcommittee go to speak to, you know, meet with businesses for them to participate in a survey to be like, hey, we also have this great new, you know,
Right.
window clang, whatever, to bring this sense of shop shopping small within the borough. So I wouldn't necessarily want incorporation of American Express or whatever to be that entity for us. I think I do, I mean, I don't wanna make that decision myself or something, but.
I'm, I'm okay to wait until next year because I thank you, Jim, for the offer. I think we wanna hype it. I think we wanna plan.
Do it really mindfully.
We wanna make a splash with a, you know, something like that. So, and it's, and again, it's a very new idea.
Yes.
Yeah, I brought it up last week, so we're just in the early stages.
Well, thanks, E G and Megan. Uh, any more discussion on that? Okay, all right. Uh, so we'll look forward to more updates from the business development subcommittee. Uh, we'll move on to zoning related updates, starting off with the planning commission solicitor recruitment. So I can I'll give a brief update on that and then let A J, Mike and Jim uh, chime in. Uh, so we, the four of us interviewed three different highly qualified solicitors for the planning commission. So we can have an independent uh, solicitor. Everyone was qualified, but there were two uh, entities that really stood out to us, um, G R B and then uh, Strasburger McKenna. So uh, super high level summary, they were both like, did a great job of explaining how they um, help planning commissions get feedback from the public, make sure everyone gets heard, and we really liked that. The main differentiating, d- differentiating factor was uh, price, um, G R B is, has a much lower rate. So the uh, the group that interviewed us, I think we're all on the same page as far as either G R B or um, Strasburger McKenna, and then um, I, I personally was leaning more towards G R B just because they have a lower price and they're both qualified, but I think um, you know, some other folks have some different thoughts. So, yeah, A, A J, if you wanna offer your feedback too?
Yeah, I, I equally, I like them both, but I think it was the good news. We were all able to say either one of these will be great for us. Um, I, I only wish I had heard more from the principal of G R B than her secondary counterpart. So that's the only, the only hesitation I had. I think when we listened to the first group, they were equally shared, equally added value, equally brought things to the table. That was my only hesitation. They're all quite qualified. And when it comes down to price, price is definitely, it's a distinct difference. Uh, and Mike helped us calculate that. Uh, so, so we looked at how many hours we have, how far that would get us. So I think that the recommendation was as, as Megan was stating it.
Yeah. Um, and so Mike or Jim, can one of you just kind of remind us of the, the process? So planning commission agrees on the recommendation. Does that then have to go to council to like formally? Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
We can move forward at that.
All right.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, any questions from Vince or Megan on the, the solicitors?
Um, is the price somewhere that I just missed?
Or? G R B is charging one eighty-five for anybody who works on the project from there and paralegal up to the principal. Uh, Strasburger McKenna is charging two eighty-five for their two partners that may work on it. And then it scales down if it's paralegal or junior, junior partner. So the top end difference is a hundred dollars.
Well, one thing I really liked about G R B too is they had clearly read some of our recent materials and the zoning ordinance. They came with a couple uh, questions about the, made up or included, they had read the materials, so. Um, yeah.
And maybe just add for the record, A J and I checked out references. We split that duty and called a, a good handful of references on both ends and all references were glowing.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you guys for doing that. All right, um. So, yeah, I mean, I would entertain a motion to uh approve selecting G R B as the planning commission solicitor.
So.
Second. Oh, second, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll get that ball rolling.
Great.
All right, just taking some notes here and then we'll move on in a second.
And could I just ask, is it an expectation that we would meet with them? And hopefully start on the issues that are in the code that we will get resolved before, perhaps before the next meeting? So we would be waiting for, waiting for, at their.
But we'll email them tomorrow and set up a, and is it gonna be the same, is it gonna be you and Rhiannon who interact with them at this point? Do you want that to be the you to be the point people? Because we can't have everybody meet with them. So maybe you two meet with, like, we'll figure out a time with the four of us, um, to start.
All right, so I'm on to item six B, uh, discussion on native plants requirement for new construction landscaping plans. Uh, Mike, did you wanna?
Yeah, um, some quick context just for the record, and bear with me for a moment because everybody already knows what I'm about to say, but I feel it's important just to say it for the record. Um, so in the current code, when somebody pulls a new construction permit, uh, they're required to submit what's called their construction set of engineered designs to the borough for examination to make sure everything's up to code, be it the zoning code or the building codes. Typically, not typically, every single time within that construction set of designs, be it for a house or a new shopping center or, or something even more complicated than that, than that. There's at least one page that has the landscaping plan for the site. That's a requirement and I would say nearly all zoning codes everywhere. So it's a very standard requirement that we currently have in this code, our current code that we're under, and we transferred all of that language to the new code. There is one addition, and it's in your agenda packets, and if folks wanna see in the audience, it's uh source to the last page where it says draft zoning code, article, article four, two, two, five, three, one, J. The very first paragraph, section one, is a new addition. Uh, that says, to the extent reasonably possible, all new planting shall utilize Western Pennsylvania native species in accordance with recommendations from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. The zoning officer may waive this requirement by written request from the applicant, from the applicant. The written re- requests shall be signed, dated, and outline the reasons why the applicant has requested a waiver. So that's the new language in the code that provides for a native plant preference.
That mean in our house?
No, 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 I'm getting there. I'm getting it. This does not apply to gardeners. It does not apply to weekend landscapers. It does not apply to businesses who wish to up their landscaping game. It only applies when somebody pulls a permit, when an applicant pulls a permit that requires a landscaping plan. So it only applies to new construction projects. Like I said, there is a typically one page, at least one page, in the construction set of designs that has the landscaping plan. So it does not apply to gardeners or landscapers or, or businesses wishing to beautify their property. So that's the context, everything I, I feel like I needed to say for the record.
That's helpful, yeah. I think that's very important to be understood. And um, the, this, this subject came up before I joined. And so having joined and having looked at this and having a, a fair amount of familiarity with this stuff, I I started listening and started talking, and I think there's a fair amount of confusion just as, as we heard, does that mean? And I think what is important is that it is confusing. One of our um, community members wrote a letter and suggested that the wording needed to be cleaned up, that there was, it was ambiguous, that there had needed to be guidance for the ordinance uh, person, which I would highly recommend. Um, I, I would be fine if this were recommended, but as it says it's required, it says it's a requirement for all native species within landscaping standards. And then it says, to the extent reasonably possible. So which is it? In my opinion, that's gonna be always a difficult call. Is the ordinance person going to make that call? Are they trained to make those decisions? What will they need to do? And is that basically?
Please hold, please hold public comment till the end. Thank you.
I'm sorry. And so will that person need training to do that or will they need help? Has anybody, and I know that our goal is to, or at least one of the goals was to um, enhance uh, birds and attracting butterflies and all of those things, which I'm highly in favor of, and half of my yard looks like that and half of it doesn't. But um, it's just to me, it is confusing as written as the requirement or it's recommended. Uh, what are the, what are the details if you don't do it? And then my other thought, having looked at it, is we got the recommendation from the um, Department of Conservation and National Resource for P A, and we looked at the list. And um, it's all Western Pennsylvania native species, which means it's the understory of the forest. That's, that's essentially what we're talking about. So it will attract deer. Um, so that is a concern. It, the more native landscape you have, the more you will attract deer, which is maybe okay, maybe it's not okay. I just want us to go into this sort of with our eyes open. And there are many things that a homeowner would want that are not on that list. So for instance, anything that isn't Western Pennsylvania. So if you want a beautiful plant and it's not Western Pennsylvania, I just feel like it's, and I know it only applies to new construction. And or you build an addition. Anything that requires a permit. So for clarification, I think it should say anything that requires a permit should be language that helps.
And
when that works.
If the addition includes a landscaping plan, then it would apply, but an addition unto itself is simply the addition.
Okay, so that, cuz I understood that it would be that, that that would be new construction.
That is new construction.
So when it says in here, um, so we talked about it as new construction, but that isn't in here. So that's where I just want us, I just want us to look at the word.
Yeah.
Uh, food itself, though, is applied to new construction. So that's the, the sort of point of the revision of the code. I, I get that. I still think for clarity, it would be something that would be helpful to spell out, just like we spell out everything else. Um, and again, then the last thing I would say is, do we really wanna ordinance people spending time on that? Yeah, I don't know. It's not a big deal. I'm just saying it's however many twenty, what, we have room for twenty-one new houses or twenty-one properties potentially? Is that right? So that's a number that's, you know, I think would be worth, would be worth raising. So I would, I would recommend just changing it to highly recommended. And go with that or change it from Western Pennsylvania native species to something else. So there's that's, that list is very limiting. There's only one rhododendron on there. It's huge one.
I, I, that's not accurate, that it's a limited amount of species, and it's also not accurate that every native plant species attracts deer.
Not every, no, I didn't say every, but I'm just saying that's that's what we run the risk of as we.
So the intent of this requirement is to, you know, preserve the landscape of our community, to improve biodiversity and to encourage very mindful development. So twenty-one new houses means potentially twenty-one new developers who could very easily decide that to we, we would be encouraging them to be more mindful in their development and to be mindful of our landscapes. Um, and I think because every new development already requires there to be a written landscaping plan. If someone who wanted to have a rhododendron that isn't native, they would simply submit that in their plan and name that it isn't native or, and then the zoning officer can easily waive that. It seems like a pretty simple way. Is that, is that understanding correct?
And, and I would recommend if there, um, one way to clarify this for readers could be move number one under three, so it becomes three F, and then it's right under all this stuff you actually include in our landscaping plan anyway. That, um, so the requirement would still be there. It would be the same. But it clarifies that it's only for development that needs a landscaping plan. I would suggest that.
I would be fine.
Just to clarify, so I'm, I'm a builder. I built a new house. I did landscape with all native species. Someone buys a house. That person who buys a house can go wild and put every non, non-aspecies in there. We're just limiting to builder.
That's correct.
So I.
Are you limiting the builder or are you limiting the homeowner?
The builder.
That's, see, that's where I have a difference. Because I feel like you limit, you know, homeowner hires a builder, but they don't do a landscape plan in the absence of the owner.
How many of these landscape plans have been submitted to Crafton last year?
No, we are no less, probably several years. Probably John Oliver has houses a lot.
And I believe walls garage and they moved made it to some landscaping plans, I believe, for the fucking lot. Okay. Um, trust me, I love gardening. I have tons of gardens, native, non-native. Um, I definitely do see the value in this, in promoting more natural native species versus Bradford pears and other species that don't do well, uh.
Absolutely.
Show all Bradford pears. Um, so I'm all in favor of leaving this as is. Um, I, maybe we can clarify, like, what this means to, so there is less confusion to, uh, for our residents, but anyway, that we can promote um, native species being reintroduced into Crafton, I think is a win.
And I think the best place to do it is parks and trails. All of Crafton's parks, all of Crafton's trails would be also a very good place to focus.
Oh, absolutely.
That's why I'm saying, not required, highly recommended, starting up, starting our borough with our parks and trails, but yeah, we'll, 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 we'll vote on it, we'll resolve it tonight. So that's where we ought, just wanted to go on record, expressing my concerns.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go on record too. I'm strongly in favor of just leaving it as is. I think it's very important to preserve biodiversity we already have and help it to prosper as well. I don't think this is overly restrictive or burdensome. Like, people can still plant whatever they want in their own yards. It's just make sure that new development is going to uh, be mindful of uh, the plantings that they're, they're using. So I think it sets, um, you know, it makes it clear that we're a community, we're a community that, you know, really cares about uh, the quality of life and um, yet doing no further harm to the environment. That's something that I really support and get behind. But I would be, you know, open to clarifying things of, you know, that's what we need to do to, to make sure this remains in the ordinance.
I would say I'm, I, I, I'm comfortable leaving it as is, and while I do, I hear the question of and concern over applying to new or to, you know, people right now, those questions, I would say that's a similar question that we get from many portions of the code. And so, you know, it's a, it's a sort of misunderstanding of, of the code and a new adoption of it, more than it is, I think, a misunderstanding of the language itself. Um, so, yeah, I think at the moment I'm in favor of keeping it as is. Do we need to vote?
Uh, I think the only thing we would need to vote on is if somebody is proposing a change and Uh, I think the only thing we would need to vote on is if somebody is proposing a change and. Then we would need to vote on what that changes.
So I would propose that we add the specificity of uh highly recommended, not required. But I understand the sense that would be, that would be what would make me feel a hundred percent more comfortable um with it. Um, and then also the um. Yeah, I mean.
Is that a motion?
S- sorry, we had to um hold public comment until until the end, but you will be able to speak at that. Wait, no, we're not, we're um, this is no approval of the the zoning ordinance. This is, this is not like a formal approval. It's just a. Like changing language. There's not like, that zoning ordinance is not getting approved at this meeting. There's like plenty of time to comment on it. So we do have to hold public comment until the end. Thank you.
Okay, bro.
Did you motion or were you just saying? If it's a motion, it's a second when we vote on it, but it's it's up to you.
That, I don't think we need to, um, yeah, let's just for the record say I motion that we change it. Um, and we just make it for highly recommended. Um, and that we also specify that it is for anything. That requires a landscape plan. That that would be the language that would be, would be clearest for anybody who thinks it's something else.
Is there a second for that motion? The hearing on the motion does not carry, but is reflected in the minutes.
I'm hearing the commission correctly. I should move subparagraph one and then edit within subparagraphs three.
I, I'm, I'm not gonna make a motion for that. I was just saying. Like that is a suggestion. So if someone else wants to make a motion for that, they will, but I don't feel strongly, so. Alright, any further discussion on the native landscaping or, okay. Alright, um, so we'll move on to six C, uh, D C D zoning liaison introduction and PowerPoint.
We can just tell you when to change the style. That's easier.
So we're gonna pull up the PowerPoint there with us. Okay. You have it.
Okay, uh, you can switch a slide.
Yep.
Um, hello, everyone. I feel weird sitting, but I'll I'll stay saying. Um, okay, maybe, what was that? Alright, can you hear me? Okay, so as I said before, my name is Stephanie Edwards. I'm a local government planning specialist with the Department of Community and Economic Development. That's a state department. We oversee a variety of funds, but specifically, um, Molly, you can introduce yourself.
Okay, yeah, so I'm Molly Sarver again. Uh, I actually come from Indiana County, so I'm really happy to be here tonight and thank you for welcoming us. I'm also a planning specialist with D C E D.
I am also happy to be here tonight. Thank you, everyone, for having, thank you for having me. Um, I'm from Allegheny County specifically, um, but we oversee lots of different funding. Uh, but I specifically oversee the municipal assistance program funding in Allegheny County. Which is the funding that was used for the zoning ordinance update process, just to be clear. Um, just to get started, as I said, we are from the State Department, D C E D, we are with the Office of Community Planning. Um, in case you were curious up there, I have what we do. Um, but mainly what we do is provide funding for planning projects to municipalities. And we are the overs, D C E D is the overseeing body for the municipality's planning code or the M P C. If you're not familiar. The M P C is the end-all be-all for planning and zoning in municipalities. So our office oversees that get done correctly and properly and legally in municipalities. So hopefully any information we give, we give you here today, you will get the correct answer from us. To be clear. Uh, you can switch the slide then. Okay, so I'm just gonna briefly talk about the grant that Crafton has it or had to spend money for this. Uh, so the municipal assistance program is funding for municipalities on planning and shared service projects. If you're really curious, I have your contract number up there. Um, but the contract dates for this grant were. Uh, July of twenty twenty-one and the grant recently expired. And in the end of June of twenty twenty-four, the Borough of Crafton was the official applicant for this grant funding. Um, Crafton applied for and was awarded fifty thousand dollars to spend on this project with the Borough of Ingram. Um, and between Crafton and Ingram, a total of a fifty percent match, which. Could have been up to fifty thousand dollars was the amount that was to be spent. So in total, this was a hundred thousand dollar project to update both Crafton and Ingram zoning ordinances. After the three years, the project got finished. You guys did not end up spending all one hundred thousand dollars. Um, but D C E D. Our agency invested a total of forty-one thousand dollars in this zoning ordinance update. And just to reiterate over here, if you look at the original timeline. Um, this was when everything was supposed to be done. Obviously, things get delayed. Uh, but in October of twenty twenty-one is when the ordinances. Should have been reviewed and adopted if going by that timeline. So I don't know who all was here at the beginning of that process. I'm sure a lot of you are new to that. Uh, but that just kind of shows you how a little um behind we are from the original intention. Uh, so if you weren't here for that process uh that I'm about to go through, that's probably why, because it got started so long ago. Yeah, you can change the slide. Alright, so this here is your project narrative. Who applied for the grant? Um, this is what. In the contract was agreed would be done with the money from the state. Um, you all can read here. I highlighted what I think are the important parts. So both boroughs seek to implement a hybrid zoning code with form-based conditions that will capitalize on key redevelopment areas. Including the Crafton Ingram Shopping Center and commercial areas adjacent to public transit. Then if you read down at the bottom, um, implementing these regulations will capitalize on the community's strong residential base. And local connectivity, including trails, public transit and easy access to employment centers. That was the narrative that was applied to for this funding and that was the narrative that was agreed upon and is in the contract. Now, if you go over to the right to the use of funds. That is what, again, was in the contract and agreed upon that the funds would be spent on. I think I highlighted the important parts. Um. But number two, public input and community vision. Um, public input is a major part of any. Planning process, whether that be a plan update, the zoning update, whatever it may be. Uh, the public is really included on this and we'll go through that in a second. Um, and then finally, the funds. Will be, should be used to review the ordinances and adopt them. So the adoption of the ordinances is included in the contract and that is part of the agreement. And to be clear, the money from the state has, Crafton has spent the money and they have been reimbursed by the state. To do everything that is in the narrative and the use of funds. So the project. By our, in the state's eyes, should also be adopted because that's in the contract, just to kind of clarify that. But we can move on to the next slide. Okay, so again, I don't know how many of you were here for the comprehensive planning process, but you guys have the Crafton Ingram comprehensive plan. Um, I hope everyone in the room has at least picked it up and taken a look at it. Um, plans are no longer big documents that are supposed to sit on the shelf. Everyone is supposed to be able to use the plan for whatever your, you know, your own interests are. Uh, so definitely take a look at the plan. I I read through it. It's a very good plan. Um, but from the plan, the main goals uh were to address deteriorating properties or blight. Address commercial development, walkability and connectivity, and address communication within the boroughs. So, to be clear, a comprehensive plan should guide the future of your borough. So the comprehensive plan. Crafton and Ingram thrive uh recommended that you do the zoning ordinance project update. So as I said, um, there's a clear public engagement process that the M P C outlines that has to be done in order to update your comprehensive plan. That public engagement process was completed through documents being mailed to residents. There's a public website. There are different pop-up events. There was a pop-up at Giant Eagle. Um, Crafton celebrates. That was all part of the process back like before two thousand seventeen to see what the public wanted for the comprehensive plan. And out of that comprehensive plan came the recommendation that Crafton needed to update their zoning ordinances. So all of that is informed by public input, just to be clear on that. But you can move to the next slide. Okay. So now this is more specifically about the the map project and funds. Um, and what our funds were used for in Crafton. So the consultant that was used was Zone Co. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, but typically when you're writing an ordinance, um. They can be very confusing, so it's important to have a professional. So the state's funds pay for a professional to come in. And do the legal professional correct process. Um, and that company just happened to be Zone Co. Um, so I get, I I would speak on their behalf that they did that process. Um, but so essentially what updating zoning ordinances kind of looks like is you review your existing ordinances. You draft your updates and your revisions, you talk to the public and you hear what they have to say and then you go back and edit again and then you repeat the process.
Correct, yeah. Um, for as an example, uh, you know, I've I've seen some of this take, it it can take one year. Um, at least, but because the engagement process is so uh repetitive, because you keep going back to the public. You know, it 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 makes sense that this did not happen in the initially proposed timeline. Um, but I think it was reasonable for it to happen within the twenty, uh, by twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so just to reiterate. Whether it be the comprehensive plan or the zoning updates, the public was included and the public should be in- included. And like over here on the right, I have examples. There's a kickoff workshop, there are surveys, there are public meetings, there's an open house, there's a public website. These were all different avenues that Zone Co. had taken um to include the public in the process. Again, I don't know how long everyone in the room has been with the process, but if you weren't familiar with this, it's probably just because it's been going on for a long time. Um, and not all of us would be sitting here for ten years, like being, being here with the process. Um, alright, so. Upon the initial re- review of the borough's zoning code, uh, just some basic findings. Were that the original code, which I think we just saw as an example, is the, the language is confusing. It would be hard for someone who's not familiar with all of like the technicalities of zoning to read. Um, so. Again, confusing language. There weren't really graphics or examples. Um, so if somebody wanted to pick up the code and understand what they could do with their property, it's. Hard to understand. Um, there were dimensional standards that weren't present. That's just another technicality that if you have someone who's looking to develop or build. Um, you know, they're gonna look at that code and maybe be a little bit confused. And overall, the code just needed a general update to work better for Crafton. There was nothing terrible about it. But everybody updates their zoning code at a certain point when it is or is not working for their community. That, you have to, you have a comment on that?
Um, and I, maybe um, uh, Mike or Jim could speak to this, but um, when was the zoning code that you've been operating off of? First implemented?
Uh, two thousand four.
Two thousand four. And was that just like an update to an existing document or was that a whole new rewrite?
It was, I'm not sure how full of a rewrite it was, but we, Crafton was actually one of the first communities in the country. Uh, to to adopt a zoning code.
Yeah.
Um, so we've had a zoning code since nineteen twenty-six. So I'm guessing that was just an update, but I don't know how thorough in two thousand.
It's in to speak to that, what happens a lot of times when you are a municipality, you're busy, you have limited staff. Problems arise, you draft an ordinance update, you add that to an existing document and you keep moving forward because you have to. You you have to keep moving forward, you have to keep functioning as a municipality. Very rarely are you able to take the time to go through and do an in-depth review of that zoning ordinance. And what can happen is the longer you put off a more thorough review, the more piecemeal that zoning ordinance becomes. That contributes to confusing language, that contributes to outdated standards and practices. That can even contribute to conflicting practices and standards, um, which is something we've seen in other municipalities. So that's why having a zoning update is so important. It's not just about, hey, let's give ourselves a whole new. You know, face, let's go craft in a whole new look. It can simply be, we need better language to be able to. Encourage better development, to make the development more accessible, to make the process more accessible. Um, and also to make sure that we are operating more similarly to the rest of modern society, depending on how. Old your zoning ordinance is.
Yeah, and I think my next slide kind of goes into this. Um, but just to be clear, up, you know, updating your zoning ordinances doesn't mean necessarily anything in your community is gonna change tomorrow. Um, and it doesn't mean anything in your community is necessarily gonna change ever. Um, if your community that's trying to attract economic development, the first thing that stops. Developers, business owners in municipalities is prohibitive zoning codes. Um, so if you have, say, I don't know, say you have a storefront where you want a nice small, small business to come in. And there's a similar storefront in the town next to you. If your zoning code is super confusing, doesn't really make sense and it seems very prohibitive. Um, that business owner might just go in the community next door because their code isn't confusing. So uh confusing language can stop economic development. And honestly, I I do like to reiterate that because if you want, you know, good things happening in your community. Confusing zoning code, even though it sounds so basic, if a developer is just, eh, they have two packets in their hand, this is Crafton, this is, I don't know, Ingram. And Ingram's is a lot less confusing than Crafton's. To them, it might not make a difference just to go with Ingram. So that's something to definitely think about when you're just thinking about a basic um zoning code update. I I definitely just want to put that out there. Um, and again, just to reiterate. For Zone Co. specifically doing this zoning, um, just like looking for what needed updated, uh, there was a sufficient legal. Correct public engagement process where everyone in the public at the time had ample opportunity to put their input in, say what they didn't want, what they did want, what they would like changed. They didn't like changed. And all of that public information is so important and informs the zoning code update. So there's something the public really didn't want. It one, I would say one hundred percent would be reflected in that zoning code update. But yeah, so we can switch the slide then.
Alright, so um, as part of that process, you know, clearly the zoning code itself hasn't been updated. But one of the things that came out of that process was a diagnostics report that looked at the existing code of both Crafton and Ingram. And then gave a breakdown of the existing conditions of that code. Some of the issues that um were revealed both by the professionals through their analysis and review, but then also that were brought forward by the community. And some of the goals they had with this update are summarized above. Again, they wanted to make something that. People could better understand, something that was more accessible, had more graphics, which in. In in my brief experience, that seems to be a movement that is happening with a lot of municipalities to incorporate better graphics, better mapping, that are easy to understand and follow. Um, and that also have more modern language. Um, in addition to this, we wanted to or. Uh, zone code and the engagement process revealed that people want to allow for vibrancy in the community and flexibility. And what those uses are, depending on what, where the property is located. Um, and they wanted those uses to meet the needs of residents and businesses. Um, but at the same time, they still want to protect that historic, like that historic character that the town has. Um, and then also promote um accessibility through walkability and your transit system. Um, they also want to make sure that whenever you're looking at the zoning map, the uses that are beside each other. And the uses of those properties are compatible with one another. So, you know, ideally, you're not sticking like a kindergarten next to a. Fireworks factory or something. Um, and and that is kind of the use, and and I I want to speak to this a little bit, the value of zoning. You know, why would a community impose rules on itself? Well, it's because if you're going to invest in a property and you're going to put money towards that property, you don't necessarily want your neighbor to just. Do whatever they want with their property. So if you're going to put, you know, thousands, millions of dollars into fixing up a business. There is a chance, like, let's say you want to set up a bed breakfast, um, without zoning. You know, next door it could be a uh, not chop shop, but uh, you know, very like a mechanic or something. It could be something with a very loud use. Something that is not compatible with the use of your property. Zoning is intended to protect that. Uh, and again, to keep more peace between neighbors. Um, but then in addition to all of this, uh, the zoning uh. With the zoning update, they wanted to create an ordinance that is easier to um, for code enforcement to enforce to protect blight. Think I covered everything there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks. Welcome.
Alright, so I just went to, again, you know, reiterate that. We we get a lot of projects like this through the mass map program, uh, program. There are a lot of municipalities that are currently undergoing zoning updates and ordinances. Um, one of them right now is the Borough of Indiana, which is the county seat for Indiana County. Um, I've worked closely, that's why, with them, that's why I stole some quotes from them. Um, but essentially, the reason they are updating their zoning ordinance is because it was outdated, the language was not easy to follow. There were conflicting requirements that was making it hard to equitably enforce. There were conflicting requirements that was making it hard to equitably enforce that code. Um, and similarly, like, or in addition to that, because they of their proximity to a state college. There's like new and emerging uses that are coming up. Um, and so while they want to protect their small town residential. Character, they also don't wanna inhibit economic development. They want people to be able to start businesses. They just wanna make sure those businesses don't destroy the peace that the residents experience. Um, and if you. Go to the next slide, it's again, just another, oh. Just another quote, speaking to um, how as things have progressed through the decades. Um, the way people are using their properties has changed. Um, you know, as an example, like Airbnb is, that's one that a lot of people are worried about addressing, um, and that's something that's significant to them. So, go ahead.
Yeah, before we go to the next slide, Molly, could you just speak on how like a zoning ordinance update doesn't mean everything is gonna change tomorrow in the community?
Yeah, so actually, yeah, and and the next slide does um, uh, uh, help with this a little bit, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, the question, okay, so like some common Q and A's, some common concerns that we see from people is, do I have to change my building? And the answer is no, anything that was built and eh eh, in the way anything is operating today before. The or up until the ordinance is implemented is grandfathered in. So, um. Essentially, that means, let's say, you know, you have. I don't know, some kind of manufacturing business, and it is just completely surrounded by single family homes. Well, unfortunately for those single family homes, maybe, but fortunately for you, you are able to continue operating. That business, you do not have to make any changes to your building. Um, until. And this, I'll skip ahead to question three, um, what happens if my non-conforming property sits vacant for reasons outside of my control? Um, in the draft that we saw, uh. If your property sits unused for twelve consecutive months. At that point, there is a chance that you will lose the ability to continue to use that non, uh, that property for non-conforming use. Unless, and they do specifically say in your, in your code, that um, you can appeal to. The code enforcement that for reasons outside of your control, you haven't been able to use it. Whether that be because there was damage that you're addressing or illness, so there there is some leeway there um, written into it. Um, now, will this stop me from making changes to my rezoned property? That's a little bit more tricky, that's a case by case basis. Um, and I I I do applaud you guys for putting so much emphasis on. Making sure the language is easily understood. Um, but luckily you also have staff here that you can bring these concerns to. Um, I generally, you know, I don't wanna speak to it too much because I'm not the legal expert on this, and this is your code. Um, but there are a lot of allowances written into the code to protect you if you want to change your non-conforming property. Um, and that's, that's if your property is currently non-conforming or would be non-conforming with the adoption. Um, from what I understand, and if, do you have the non-conformity map in there?
Next slide.
Okay, yeah, so, um, they. It, you know, I I again, really good work. Um, but this is a non-conformity, uh, this is a a map showing all of the lots that are currently considered non-conforming. With the existing zoning code. That means, um, I don't know which color it is, but.
Um, the all, everything but the tan is non-conforming, so nine hundred and sixty-one total. Not, and these are only residential, I didn't do business, non-conforming, and that would be most of the businesses in the business district, but these are all the residential. Um, parcels that are not.
Yeah, and to clarify, this isn't what's non-conforming with what they are suggesting. This is what's non-conforming with the zoning code you currently have. This was actually an issue that Indiana Borough discovered whenever they went to go look at their zoning ordinance. They want, you know, that historic feel, they want those, um, you know, they don't. For them, probably find for other communities, but they wanted to allow development close to the street. Um, they wanted for people to be able to expand their households, um, so they wanted smaller setbacks. And a lot of their historic loved residential structures. Are are like that, they have, they they are, they have very small setbacks. And when they looked at the code that they had and that they've been piecemeal updating for years. They found that a lot of the buildings they wanna protect were non-conforming. So, you know, again, I'm. I'm not going to go into the specifics of Crafton's code, but this shows you what is currently not allowed. But non-conforming, again, if it's something is grandfathered in, that means that it's allowed to exist the way it is up until, say, it's vacant for. Let's say twelve months and it doesn't mean any of the um, detailed reasons or excuses as to why it could be sat vacant. Um, so, you know, I I I don't know how many of these would now become conforming under the new update.
It's actually listed.
Oh, there you go, there you go.
So that all things in green, based on the new code would become conforming. Um, and so right now, we have forty-eight percent of residential lots are non-conforming, almost half. Um, with the, with the change, twenty-five percent will be non-conforming. And um, if we shrunk the um, uh, required a lot size to three thousand square feet. We would make only twelve percent non-conforming for residents. Now, this is only residential. This isn't a business, business would be even more flexible, so it would probably make, it would probably lower the entire boroughs to less than ten percent non-conforming.
Yeah, so again, you know, this is your community, th- these are the restrictions you're placing on yourself to protect the characters. Uh, characteristics that you like and to incentivize the changes that you wanna see in your community. Um, but if you really like your community just the way it is, at least by the standards of this map. This zoning ordinance would allow this community to be, to stay just the way it is, better than the existing zoning update. Um, and you know, this isn't some. Code, sorry, thank you. Yeah, sorry, better than the existing zoning code. And again, this is something that we've seen in a lot of different, or. Not a lot, a lot, um, I'm still a little bit new on the job, but um, I have seen it in other municipalities. Um, and you know, i- i- it's it's something that, um, I think that if you, you know, review the code. Um, ask some questions of your staff, if you have any more concerns, but also realize that this isn't something where they're trying to, you know. Create a whole new face for Crafton, but they're trying to protect Crafton based off of what community engagement they received in the past. Not just through the zoning up update that happened in twenty twenty-one, but also through that comp plan process. So really, there was two strong rounds of community engagement that happened. Um, and you know, it's up to, it's up to you, all you guys to decide what you do from here. Um, but just know that zoning up ordinance updates aren't as scary as they may initially appear. Um, but of course, you know, I I I respect you all for coming here tonight and for showing concern for your community. Um, and of course, for being diligent in your review of the zoning updates, uh, so that way, hopefully, you won't need to do as many updates in the future.
Yeah, so do we wanna take specific, uh, I guess, like? Questions from the public on this presentation now or put that until?
Well, the next thing is public comment anyway. You can just mute the public comment unless um, you have questions before.
Yeah, any questions from the planning commission?
Thank you for being here. I thought that was a great overview. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, someone had the list of signup sheet for.
There's no one on the list. Does any, does anybody wanna sign up?
Well, is this something like we should respond to or?
We have, yeah, we have the option.
Okay. Or you let us, we should.
It's that.
What, if you want us to try to.
Many times we have said, well, when we talk to our D C E D, we'll have better answers, so maybe.
Do you wanna, yeah, do you wanna go ahead and then, there's someone online, there's someone online that's gonna speak as well?
I appreciate your presentation. Very informative, um, uh, there's a one thing you said about thrive. Saying that, uh, the public said that they will be wanting, um, uh, um, to thrive. You know, thrive, I'm not sure what age is, but there is a page there that says that, uh, the consultant did not find that public. That's before we don't. So, if you reach that, I'll, I'll, I'll try and find it pretty soon now. So the, the public did not, through thrive, and that first, um. Round of public engagement, um, uh, you weren't asked to do it. I'm not against them, we're not against them, we're, um, for maybe, there's, should be some fight.
Yeah, am I able to comment? That, okay, just making sure. I think actually in the presentation, that line is on there. So I I also read that page of the comprehensive plan. I think it said, I think it said something to the effect of, um. I don't know if it's alright.
I go ahead.
Okay, it's okay. I think it said something to the effect of the zoning update wasn't a priority for the public right now, so you are correct to say that. But I do think after a thorough review, the consultant found that like the zoning update was still necessary per se. Um, so sometimes that might mean the public is saying, you know, we don't, we don't find the zoning update to be a necessary thing right now. But through other things, they're saying like, we want more businesses, we wanna, we wanna, you know, like blight.
We wanna protect historic.
Historic preservation, those are all things that we might say, you know, the zoning thing doesn't seem that important right now, but we want all these other things. And essentially, those other things are the zoning update. So maybe that, I I I wasn't here, but maybe that's kind of what it was getting at. Like, you know, maybe they said, we don't see zoning as a priority, but we wanna fight blight, we want historic preservation, we we want economic development. And those are, zoning is your first step to all of those, so that could be the case.
Hard craft, I don't think anyone's against changing, so, I think they're getting done, and they're also getting a lot of work being done. Um, you have, I don't think a lot about public engagement, things like that. I think there's two parts to public. I think there's part of, well, the public didn't say something, but then there's about a part of the building, so it's probably gonna play. Um, there are examples, there are several examples from the public, which pretty much ignored this process. Um, one of them was with the A D U's. A D U's were, were originally, um, bought to pay well by the public. A regional consultant felt, oh, heard that, and heard a meeting, so, oh, says. So, um, don't embark on A D U's, there's, there's, it's, 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 probably, probably, I think. Um, we want something that works well, um, but, um. The, um, this. On charge, we gotta should say, uh, would let it go, you know, um, it's been much, much space. Then on the table, off the table, that along with inverted apartments. So, so it's told that to off the table, then they're back on the table. As far as, you know, last, our last meeting, it was brought up that, uh, hey, maybe A D U's are still on the table. Listeners, that's true, it's, it's need to be happening in that same. Why did some things get searched, maybe, around being dated by the, that's basically the code. So, um, I would say that you should recommend, um, to our staff or officials or. Or yourself, uh, that those things that, you know, quite ago, there for the last nine or ten months, which is very part of these cases. They should just be off the table, we were told they're off the table, we're told they're back, to put it back on the table. I, I think happens sometimes with you two, and anybody else from the staff, with your historical play, this. This thing was, so, um, I just don't want you guys to be, um, uh, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, okay, I will let somebody else comment on the A D U thing, um, but I, okay, wait, I lost my train of thought now. Um, but from my, from my understanding, does somebody wanna comment on, um. The, when it comes to townhouses, like duplexes, those types of things, from my understanding, there's a very limited amount that would even.
Qualify because.
Anyway, yeah.
I'm not sure what.
Um, I, yeah, I I think what Stephanie is, um, is talking about is, okay, so, um. If you were to allow A D U's, there are only so many lots that currently exist that would even qualify for an A D U. If the property owner wanted to develop one. And again, we haven't done an assessment of the properties ourselves, um, but yeah.
What else, or what, what it is that you think we're allowed to do?
Certainly. Yeah.
So I don't wanna argue with you, I just want to, if you'd like to talk, I think we'll have to.
Yeah, thanks, Greg, yeah, if you wanna.
Yeah, thanks, Greg, um, just to clarify, A D U's dead, off the table, please don't bring them up, they are, they're not coming back.
Okay, I don't know why they were on for the minutes.
What, what minutes, what are they on?
Say, you know, just last, last week, you were even just about, you know, you said you. I think that, well, maybe we have the A D U's in the industrial area, they not have.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's because.
Like, maybe, you know, those codes potentially required there to be A D U's somewhere in the zoning code.
Well, when you said, and that is, that, well, that is true for every use. Every use that is not specifically listed in a zoning code, and then it, you wanna explain that?
So.
Not mandated.
Yeah, so.
Not mandated, again, we're not, I'm not, that's not what I was suggesting. I was suggest, and not at all. Um, that, what I was suggesting is, every type of use has to be identified, if it's not, and someone comes, then they have.
Just like right now, there are, there are A D U's in Crafton, but because there's nothing in the code that says they're not allowed, that's why people can build them.
Yeah, so, and and and.
The discussion, like, about the A D U's in the industrial area, and I, your, your comment was that they mainly, so. Be allowed.
Just like you have to.
Jim isn't a decision maker in the end, and the planning commission is opposed to A D U's.
Yeah, and this, and I'm not suggesting, I was not suggesting at all that A D U's are included so that they're allowed in residential districts. I was saying that, just like you have to have mobile homes in there, just like you have to have adult bookstores. And you have to list them as a use somewhere, if that's true, now that A D U is a common use. Is that doesn't have to be listed so that we can.
Not listed as eligible, but listed as ineligible and banned. And I I I think what he's alluding to is, like, again, that.
The way it stands is, if you don't specifically say no to something, then that means theoretically it can be allowed. Um, so, you know, and and you, thank you for using the example of the adult bookstore, because I was going to also use an example, but I wasn't sure if this was appropriate. But there are certain businesses that, you know, you may not want next to your elementary school, you may not want next to your, you know, aging facilities. Um, and unless you specifically say you cannot have this within insert criteria. Um, like, for instance, I think, uh, again, sorry to keep going to Indiana Borough, it's just what I know the best. Um, but for them, you can't have adult. Sexually oriented businesses within a certain uh, radius of schools. And because of the size of Indiana Borough, and because of how many schools they have in there, that does effectively ban adult businesses from the borough. So I think what the miscommunication is, i- is again, you need to have, if you don't want A D U's, you have to say something about A D U's. In order to make sure that you don't get A D U's. I I, sorry.
Sorry, I just said.
That would be.
Just like wrap up, cause we're like way over the time limit, sorry.
Well, I wanna make this, and I wanna make this abundantly clear, that is.
I totally understand that they are not mandated, like, to identify, you know, the.
Yes.
And that was all I stated last week.
Thank, yeah, thanks, Tim. I think, I think what we're learning is saying A D U's in here is like saying Macbeth in a theater, we just. Say it, um, sorry, still in the mood. Tha- thanks, Greg, um. Yeah, anyone, I, was there someone who had raised their hand online? I wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
That we don't miss that.
I will pull that up for. I'm gonna, okay, I'll pull that up first, and then you can go, Susan.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna, Cody, I'm gonna allow you to speak now, if you wanna unmute yourself.
Hmm, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, uh, Cody Sheets, um. You know, um, we're talking about thrive, we're talking about public engagement, we're talking about zoning consultants, we're talking about all this kinda stuff. You, like. Despite the overwhelming amount of opposition that you have received to this zoning initiative. You nevertheless constantly try to shove it down our throats, and now you're bringing other people in here to try to convince us that what you're doing. Is like the right thing to do. And again, years of community engagement that you claim that you've done and that has been successful. That has produced less than a hundred people surveyed for over six thousand residents. That's not quantitative data, nor is asking a question, should we allow townhouses in Crafton? A, a quality amount of data or a quality question, um, like. The, the, the idea that you guys have created strong community engagement is a joke to me. Um, we've literally brought up, uh, many times that you should just, if you wanna create community engagement, like you say you do, and you're welcoming. The opinions of residents, and you want everybody to feel good about it, then create a committee that represents the. The opinions of residents and you want everybody to feel good about it, then create a committee that represents the community. But you're not doing that, you're not doing that, and you're just shoving this stuff down our throats. The zoning consultant, as Greg said. And I'm gonna bring up A D U's regardless of whether you want me to or not. The zoning consultant told you, Jim, don't do it. And you did it anyway. You kept pressing forward with it anyway. So we don't trust the things that you're saying here. You're, you're bringing us somebody in, you're trying to shame us for feeling the way we do. And, and, and make us feel bad about having opposition. Well, like, we're a sinking ship of fools if you think that you're gonna get support. From the public by bringing people in and trying to shame us having an opinion. Regardless of anything that you try to throw at us here, we are not going to support the zoning initiative as it exists and as it is written. Period. You've had public engagement, and you, and you created this open house, and then you did nothing with it. You did nothing with the engagement. You just left it the same. It was a big ruse. It was a big ruse to try to make everybody feel better and make it feel like we're just this connected community. When really you have your own ideas on how this is gonna go, and you're gonna force it down our throats whether we like it or not. Thanks.
Thanks, Cody. All right, anyone else online or just?
Okay, so I'm just here to support the native plan. I have a ten year landscaping plan here that started with my husband falling off the hill all the time, raining out. Which led me straight into native plant. I have not done it to do that. I really have. And, and I do know that this year, our governor has. Passed an initiative that Penda has to be used native plants now on all of the side.
That's appropriate.
So this is the trajectory to go. It also opens us up for grants, some places like the odd one. We get money for our parks. And it's like, I've been working here in Crafton for like six years, and you. You haven't built one house since I've been here. So I don't see this as being something that I'm going to be like, have to deal with all the time. It's not something that I've seen in six years. No new building. We don't have the time space to build. Just don't, but that we do, we have lots of blocks. I know where they all are. But there's not a lot of building going. Maybe that's part of the reason why change was on, encouraged that. But I don't find this to be that unreasonable. I think maybe, and I could talk to you a little bit longer about it. One of the things that occurred meanwhile, listening was. Instead of requiring less than a year, you can require by. So when I, when I put all of my stuff in, I didn't, there was nowhere to buy plants when I first started, except for one place. And now they're everywhere. But very, it's very easy to buy native plants, very easy to set up a landscaping plant. And what you're doing is you're supporting, you're making yourself part of the ecosystem around you instead of trying to look at your house as a castle unto itself. You're not, you're never gonna be. And we have ecosystems that are collapsing. And unless we change laws and go after landscaping colonies and people that keep bringing new plants in, that are destroying the local ecosystems, nothing's gonna change. I put, in the nineties, I saw all this, all this smoking laws change all around the other people. And like, we could have asked people to voluntarily not smoke on plants, but that didn't work. So like, sometimes, sometimes. Sometimes laws have to be changed in the environment, because just encouraging people is not gonna get them, it's not gonna happen. Because it's new. And it is really difficult, but as this time goes on, it gets easier and easier. We started sixteen years ago, we not super easy to buy a plant. And the other thing is, in our ordinances right now, in our maintenance code, we already have terminology. Before I became code officer, I asked councils to adjust and, and adapt our lead, like the IPMC's. Performance, because we have to adjust how tall and what the ground. What they also adjusted when they put in there that the planting of indigenous plants is partly covered. Which means this would be adjacent to what we already have. Which is a good thing overall for getting us grants from organizations that will help us to make us more environmentally. And I'm already enforcing that at the code office. Like, if I, if I go by and I see that you've got a native garden, I'm gonna give you one. I can identify every single plant in there. And I'm probably the only person around in the country who can do that. I'm not bragging, I just, I've never known it's like a so. So, and I've run, I've run workshops here. I'm, I'm fine with encouraging, with being a part of our government, that each of people had to do it. Um, I don't have a lot of your role.
So, sorry to interrupt, the, the, the time's off, so could you back up? Sorry.
Funny to say, like, I'm, I'm supporting it. There's a few adjustments, I can talk to Mike about that work. But I think it needs to stay in, because if you encourage people doing it, I'm like, I've just seen it.
Thank you.
I'm a Penn State master gardener. Um, I'm very in a changing phase, or for reasons we decided for native plants in the borough. Two more items, or even considering the interest in how busy folks in this room, and I know there are a lot. That's not gonna be conceived of to really, we're gonna have to be really carefully clarified, just as I brought up before. The difference between required, recommended, and who the gold standard might be for.
Conservation, State Department of Conservation.
But that, that should also be included there. And to AJ's point, native plants will support native insects and birds and wildlife. So, you get what you get. It might end up being yard, it might not, but it certainly ramp up the amount. I'm glad you're looking into it, and just, I think we just need a little more specificity, required, recommended, and.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Corey Rama, I'm two six four West Stewart Street. Um, I just kinda wanted this, I wasn't gonna really say anything, but I just wanted to come up and thank you, Molly and Stephanie for coming out and giving us this presentation. You're here to inform us, you're here to give us the additional context of how the sausage gets made in terms of zoning. You're not here to shove it down our throats, you're not even residents of the boroughs, you don't really have a say in what goes on. And I just wanna apologize that you were attacked in that way. You are here to inform us. And give us the information that we need so that the community knows how we got here, and like where we're going and stuff like that. You know, so like, I just kinda like, wanted to say I appreciate you guys coming out here, and also I just wanted to, I had a little tidbit that I personally am in favor. Of the native wildlife initiative. It's really nice to kind of like, I can give you many different statistics that would probably like gloss your eyes over, but. It's just a really good initiative to have. And as was stated before, there were many different ways where if you want something different. You can apply for an exemption, and it's not necessarily the end of the world. Plus. You know, Crafton has been basically the same way as I've heard for the last thirty, forty years. There's a massive housing developments like over in Robinson or something like that being built. So it won't really affect everything now, but it gives people the option and stuff like that. I just, I personally appreciate it, so, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, I think we have one in person comment, and then I do see, um, an online comment after.
Sandy Lawrence Bar Avenue. And, I'm sorry to do this, but I don't have. But I know everybody's against it, or even planning admission, but based on. The vision of the zoning, there is nothing in there that says you can't have it. You know, there's nothing in there that states you cannot have an A D U. So if you're saying, they took the A D U's out. On that whole list chart, of all the different types of housing, now it doesn't exist. And what we're getting told now is because it doesn't exist means it's a free for all.
I think this was what Jim was intending the last time to name, that we do need to include them and in the, in the chart of the. Not permitted use, right? So that it's named but not permitted.
That's why I suggested in Oakmont's Furo Code, it's specifically states, like, A D U not permitted. So, I'm just, wanna make sure we're clear, like, on one hand, we're saying we took out, that's great. But you wanna make sure they stay out.
Yeah, and, and this was one of the things we were waiting on the solicitor for, yeah, yeah. And I, thank you. I need to double check Sandy, but I'm pretty sure that suggestion was, was approved. Several meetings back, and it's just not incorporated yet, cuz I'm waiting.
They're still discussing it, checking with the solicitor to make sure that it's allowed.
Yeah, that's what we were.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think that might. Uh, hi, my name's Chris McCormick. Um, so I moved to Crafton in May of this year. Um, I moved here from out of.
Can you just speak up a few minutes, just a little more, even with the mic, that would be helpful.
Yeah, uh, so I moved to Crafton in May of this year from out of state. Um, I spent a year looking for a house in the Pittsburgh area. Um, I came to Crafton. I don't know if anyone else is doing what I did, uh, moving here, because, you know, it's unaffordable in a lot of other places around the country. Um, I also partially do it because I'm worried about, you know, climate crises that might happen. Where I live in this area is a, a great area to live. It's relatively insulated from those kinds of crises, and it's affordable. And so where I moved from, you know, thirty, forty years ago, a lot like here. Um, everyone just wanted single family zoning, they didn't wanna make room for more people, more uses, and so they didn't, and it became unaffordable. And so I think to, what you have to do when you are doing, is trying to make sure that you have a plan. That hopefully makes room for everyone that wants to live in Crafton in the future, and also the people that currently live here. Because, you know, I didn't know when I was five years old that I had to come to a planning meeting and say, hey, make room for me, I wanna live in this community when I grow up. Um, because, you know, they didn't, and so I moved here, you know, across the country, because there was no space for me. And so I hope that when you're making these decisions, when you're making these plans, and you're looking at the uses that you're allowing, the kind of density that you're allowing, where you're putting it. That you're keeping in mind that there are lots of people that, you know, can't come here to speak because they don't know to. Uh, they don't have the time, they have school, they have jobs, or they just don't wanna get up here and speak because it's nerve wracking. Especially when you've got people telling you, we don't want you here, we don't want renters, we don't want people in A D U's, even though those, uh, uses exist here already. People live in them. You're telling members of your community that we basically don't want more of you here, so we're gonna plan you out of it. And so I hope that when you're making these decisions, you keep that in mind, because thirty, forty years from now. Crafton may be a desirable place to live. I know it's not right now, we don't have development pressure right now, but if we do. And we don't have the mechanisms in place to make room for what's happening. You know, you could end up with more people like me who have to leave your communities that you're concerned about, you know, the Crafton. I think on the logo it says making a path work for everyone. And it seems like that may not happen if you don't, you know, plan to make sure everyone has a place to live in thirty, forty years from now. Just in case development pressure increases, and that's the thing that happens. Obviously, it's not now, but if it does, you know, I'd like to see. You make room for those people. So, thank you, and thank you also for coming out to speak to us, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Jane Megan Sarah Street. Um, so, as a member of the zoning steering committee. That was one of the things that we did discuss, and, um. Our kinda like, you know, like thought about that was. What we wanna do is, we wanna make sure that Crafton's not kind of being parsed up by landlords who are gonna be absentee or abuse their renters by. High prices, not taking care of the property properly. My like neighbor, you know, like lives somewhere else, does not take care of anything, the people living there basically are subject to. Whatever she wants to do. Um, and it's not fair or right by them, so that's something to keep in mind too. Is that we're not against renters per se, but landlords that aren't taking care of their renters. Um, another thing to keep in mind is that we don't also want corporations and like private companies to buy up property. And turn Crafton into something that's untenable long term for people here anyway. So, these are two things to keep in mind.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
I do just kinda wanna add that, you know, I understand everything that was said, but we are capable of chewing gum and walking at the same time. We can develop a system where we hold these landlords to account. And make sure that they're investing in their properties as they should be, that the people who are living at those properties are being taken care of while at the same time. Opening ourselves up for more, like for, um, not necessarily even like more renters, just like more places to live so that. Families of different sizes, whether like mine, or anybody else in this room can live in this community. Like, that's all that we're at, like, you know, that's like, it's like, it's not out of the realm of possibility to do both at the same time. And like, you know, I live, like where I live, it's like, I, I live next to a lot of absentee homeowners who don't invest in their properties. Almost as much as some of the renters that everybody keeps complaining about. So it's kinda like. It just feels like you're singling out one specific thing, when it's like the whole community is kind of affected by that. So I just kinda like wanted to add that as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Uh, so one, one thing I'd just like.
You gotta state your name and.
Nicole Curven. Uh, are we stating addresses now, or?
Uh, you can just say your name.
Yeah, you can just write it down, yeah.
All right, cool. Yeah, so one thing I'd like to say is I'm in favor of potentially adding language prohibiting the planting of invasive species. Uh, cuz there are a lot of those that developers like to plant. Japanese barberries, the bane of my existence. Second, I, I'm not here to attack you, I appreciate your presentation. I do think it's important to recognize you're coming into a process that has been pretty contentious, and so I do think it's important to understand people's concerns. In some depth and try to avoid shaming people or minimizing their concerns. Um, just to reiterate, it's excellent to try to engage the community, but. You also have to ensure you're reaching everyone and that your data is representative of the community and the people who could be most affected, and. Um, I don't, I think that is a cause for taking time and not rushing. Especially when the impacts are disproportionate on marginalized groups when you rush something typically. Um, related to that, I'm somebody who analyzes systems of millions of people for a living, and if, uh, if at work I said that nothing would change. On the basis of my recommendations, I'd have to back that up with a pile of research and some impact studies. Um, for each recommendation, not just for the, for the whole thing. So I'm just saying I'd like to see some of that happen. Um, so that we can have more confidence as a community in the impacts of things going forward. Um, and I'd like to ask on what basis of evidence related to that, meaning like peer reviewed expertise, are you contending that? Nothing will change when we're talking about a, a complex document, one hundred and thirty-five pages with numerous updates related to use and density.
Can I respond? Well, at least if, if I said nothing will change, what I essentially mean is, like, you're not gonna wake up tomorrow and everything's gonna change. Also, I. Do you wanna elaborate on that?
Sure, sure, so, um.
I know you said that, I'm sure, not Molly.
And, and, and maybe, maybe I said, uh, said something that might have been, maybe I didn't, I didn't communicate well enough, or my, my word choice was poor. Um, I think what we wanna stress is that you are not going to be forced to change your, your use or your property. As soon as this is adopted, that is not something, it will be grandfathered in, you will not be required to make changes to that property. Or like, or the use, even if you, even if you sell it, the only time a use will change, if you are a nonconforming property. Is if it sits vacant for more than twelve consecutive months, and that is only with certain conditions added to it, which again, that's, that's in the code, but. They would be able to speak to that more. And again, this is obviously also language that you would need to decide on as a community, or. Bring concern, um, about us as a community. Um, in terms of what we mean at, uh, with the nonconforming use map. The zoning ordinance that is being proposed from Jim's analysis, which of course, you'll probably wanna see more information about what went into that analysis. Um, but the zoning code they are proposing would force less changes than the one you already have. So even though there haven't been these forced changes, largely because there hasn't been as much development which would trigger that change. The opportunity or the risk of that change being forced on someone who is changing that, or developing that property, is there in the existing code. From what Jim has put together on the map, it, the new zoning code better aligns with the existing uses of. The town as it stands. So it's, it's one thing to have a zoning map, right? And you can say, like, look at this community, it's perfectly, you know, parceled off as, here's the single residential, here's the commercial. That's not what the reality of that community is. And especially, again, if you aren't having these, um. You aren't having developments which would trigger the opportunity. And especially again, if you aren't having these, um, you aren't having developments which would trigger the opportunity for them to say, hey, you know, you just tore down the single family house. You sold it, it sat vacant for a while. Now that's no longer single family, that's commercial. You haven't had that many instances. But the opportunity or the potential was there with the old code. With the new code, it's looking like there will be less of that potential or opportunity because the zoning regulations that are being proposed are more in line with the existing character of the community. Again, that in, you, but you are right to say that that doesn't mean that nothing will change. There are going to be things that change slightly, but again, because it's grandfathered, it's not changing immediately. Um, and chances are that change is probably better aligned with what the community wants or what it looks like as, as it is today. But you're right, it's, it's always good to have a thorough engagement process and lots of access to data where possible.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and I, just for clarification and transparency and because I, I missed like the first couple minutes of your presentation. So what has your role been in the process to date and what will it be going through?
Our role in this process has only been the administration of the funding that was given to Crafton and Ingram. Um, so our interest is seeing that funding be used in the way that it was proposed it was going to be used. Um, but you know, I, I really wanna give a lot of credit to everyone who's sitting around the table because a lot of them weren't a part of the initial zoning, uh, update project. Um, if I'm, am I wrong on that? I, I believe you.
That's true.
Yeah, so unfortunately, yeah. And again, this isn't, this isn't something I've, I've not seen in other municipalities. You're, you're having people who care about their community who are having to pick up the football and run with it. Um, so, you know, that, that being said, of course, you know, we still need to be held accountable for what's happening today. When I say we, I really shouldn't say we because we're not a part of this team really. We're just here advocating for the importance of that community engagement process. Intentional planning, because if the community isn't deciding what's gonna happen to it, somebody else potentially will. Um, and then of course, um, you know, really just trying to, uh, explain what zoning looks like and that it isn't an inherent evil. It's a tool. Um, and how your community chooses to use it, um, that's going to, that's gonna determine whether or not the zoning is right for you.
And just a final comment, I'll say I agree that it's a tool. And I think part of the community concerns that I've heard have been about ensuring that it can't be a tool used to promote, uh, unequal uh, basically inequality and, oh, like businesses doing things that we wouldn't want. Um, and so to like, ensure that there aren't conflicts and interests and things like that happening, I think has been a concern of people's. That's just what I've heard.
Thank you.
We do have someone online too. When you're done, Linda, you have someone online?
Just one more comment. I saw it in a minute, I mean, yeah, in the minutes for the last meeting under public comment that everyone's name and their addresses are being placed in there. I, I don't mind speaking mine or writing it down, but when we're publishing them, it's totally optional for people to to say that they don't want it in there. Is it correct? So
Can we just say that we don't want addresses in the minutes at all?
For you to make sure that everyone's a resident, but I just noticed that and I think it could be.
Yeah, we can take.
Thank you.
I'm gonna let Barbara here and tell. Barbara, you are able to unmute yourselves and talk now.
Okay. Hi, Barb Basic. I was just calling or wanted to speak on a couple of things. The first is, um, the whole nothing's gonna change tomorrow. I think everybody understands that. And our concern is not for something to change tomorrow, but within the next few years, things could change. It could be positive or it could negatively impact our lives here and our property values. So I think that long term is what we're looking for. Not what's going to happen tomorrow. And also I think Nicole is correct with the impact studies, like I understand that we want to bring in businesses. And if we were only talking about changing the codes to the business district, I think it would be a whole different conversation than what's going on. I think most people are more upset about the changes to the residential areas. That's number one. And then the second thing I wanna follow up, I know I hate to talk about ADUs, but is is it true, ADUs will not be allowed even in the industrial area? Or is that still going to be permitted?
Um, we don't know. This is, that's what we're checking with. Um, we're checking with the, uh, solicitor once, once they're hired. So that's gonna be a port of action for the planning commission to check into.
Seems like the intention is to allow the least amount of ADUs possible. Um, only allowing them where it is like legally required, right? So it's.
Right. And that, and the indu- industrial, we basically have, there's probably four houses in all of the industrial sections. And I don't think they have any space for, um, for ADUs. So that's exactly.
And I'm not taking any position on any of that. I just wanna make sure that you all are understanding each other.
Alright, yeah, just because, I mean, we are on Duncan, we're near, we're, people cut from the industrial park up through our neighborhood, you know, constantly. So it will impact where we live if something's allowed in the industrial area.
No, that's not true. Um, you're not anywhere near Maxwell. There is no industri- the only industrial area in Crafton, the industrial area near you is in the city of Pittsburgh. The only industrial area in Crafton is down by Promenade.
Oh, I was thinking it was the one where people cut through by like the Amazon. That's Pittsburgh?
That's the city of.
Oh, okay. Alright.
Only one industrial area in the entire, uh, borough and it is down at the end of Shurkier's Avenue.
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Any other public comment? Alright, uh, and that's all. Oh, is that a question?
That's a comment. Cody Sheets said, are you aware that of the lawsuit in the county in Virginia that overturned rezoning because of a lack of impact studies? And I, and he's, I guess he's saying we should expect a lawsuit.
Okay, thank you. Um, alright. Hearing no additional public comment. Do adjourn the meeting?
Summer.
Oh, sorry.
I was wondering the same thing. Yeah.
Are you checking my? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's scheduled for the twenty, it would be the twenty-fourth. So I assume it's.
Let's do it. Let's do it.
Thank you.
Uh, you wanna maybe move it up to the week before like this month? I went and split council. Council's the next, next Tuesday. So like sixth, I think.
So move it to the seventeenth is what you're saying?
Yeah, all good.
Yeah. Anyone opposed to the seventeenth? Is that something we have to vote on? Okay.
I gotta do.
Thank you. Thanks for your.
Yeah, no, thanks. Good question. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Okay. Anyone to post? Alright, adjourn at eight oh nine PM. Thanks, everyone.